Well, good evening, folks. It is Tuesday, March 22, 2022. It's 6:00 PM. We're in the council chambers of the city of Platteville, and I am calling the regular meeting of the common council to order. Candace will start with roll call.
Kathy Kopf.
Here.
Jason Arts.
Here.
Lynn Parrott. Isaac Shanley.
Here.
Barbara Dos.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Here.
Eileen Nichols.
Here.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is a proclamation for National Library Week. And Jessie, if you would like to come forward to the microphone. You'll know we have a fabulous library. Okay, so this is a proclamation, whereas libraries are accessible accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of connection and build community, and whereas libraries connect people to technology, providing access to broadband internet, computers and training that are critical for accessing education and employment opportunities. And whereas libraries offer opportunities for everyone to connect with new ideas and become their best selves through access to multimedia content, programs and classes in addition to books. And whereas today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of a building, and everyone is welcome to use their resources. And whereas in times of crisis, libraries and library professionals play an invaluable role in supporting their communities, both in person and virtually. And whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. And whereas to adapt to our changing world, libraries are expanding their resources and continuing to meet the needs of their patrons. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted trusted and treasured institutions for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the frisked exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries, librarians and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week, now therefore be it resolved that I Barb Dawes, common council president, proclaim National Library Week, April 3 to 9, 2022. During this week, I encourage all residents to connect with their library by visiting online or in person to access resources and services. Congratulations.
I appreciate it.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of our consent agenda. The following may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. We have the, let me know if you want to, anything separate separated. We have the council minutes from March 8, the regular meeting. Payment of bills, appointments to boards and commissions. Tonight I have two. Zane Chrysanthemum to the tide committee and Corey Wine to a three-year term ending May 1, 2025 of the plan commission. We have licenses temporary class B to serve fermented malt beverage to Platteville Main Street program at 345 West Main Street Hidden Quilts on Wednesday, May 25 from 2 to 6 for the May monthly mingle. And we have one and two-year operator licenses to sell and serve alcohol as were included in the packet. Do I have?
I move to approve all items listed under consent calendar.
Second. Candace will vote on the consent agenda.
Kopf.
Yes.
Arts.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Shanley.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Okay, next we have citizens comments, observations, and petitions, if any. I had no one registered to speak, but I would ask our fire chief to remind us of the date of the annual fireman fire department pancake breakfast because we'll want to get that on our calendar.
For again, annual after a couple of years off, Pancake Breakfast fundraiser is April 10. And it will be held at the high school from 7:00 AM to 12:30 PM. So look forward to seeing everybody there.
And Lynn says to be sure and have a birthday cake for her because it's her birthday that day. So she wants a birthday pancake.
Oh, fire then flames on it.
There we go. All right, anybody else with any special announcements? I would also let people know that the museum lyceum programs are continuing on Sundays at 5:00. They're in a virtual format. Adam, anything?
Yeah, I do want to give a shout out to Carol Swain, who is in our attendance. I'm going to embarrass him a little bit. This is our city manager intern that has been working with us for the past couple of months here. He has been doing an amazing job kind of working on various projects for not only myself, but also he's helping director Mauer on a project today. So we're very excited that he's here and he's been hitting the ground running. And I think you've already seen one thing that came to the council that he was working on, but there'll be a couple of others. So we're glad to have him here.
Candace, do you want to give an update on voting, please? Is it possible?
As far as it, the next election date is April 5. We are currently just started today. Our in-office absentee voting that is going to continue until next Friday. The last, the last day we are here until 5:00 PM, but all the other days we are here 8 to 4:30 PM. We did have a little bit of a turnout today, not a lot, but the first day is always a little slow. But we are still doing pushing information out as far as the polling locations with District 1 and 2 being at the Nebraska Center and District 3 and 4 at Alsvic. You can also find parking maps on our website if you are at all nervous about the parking. We've worked with the university and they've been working with us in a excellent manner to provide some additional parking with the close parking lots that are next to the Alsvic building. So that's been a very big help. Our city police also block off the Hickory Street between Maine and Pine. So that is for voter parking only along the street there. So there's really good close parking there. And we are just looking forward to a successful election day. So.
Okay, so in-person absentee voting available now at City Hall between 8:00 and 4:00.
8:00 and 4:30. So just our normal hours.
Except for the last day, which would be.
We're here until.
April 2, I guess. April 2.
April 2 or April 1, I believe.
Is a Friday. Okay.
Yep, until 5:00.
Until 5:00 that day. And you can also bring your own absentee ballot to the clerk's office if you got one in the mail.
Correct.
Or you can put it in the mail.
You can place it in the mail. It does have a return postage already on it. You do not need to put a stamp on it. Or if you don't wish to put it in the mail, then we would ask that you personally hand deliver it to the clerk's office. We are not able to use a Dropbox. So the one outside of City Hall, you will notice is very well signed to not accept absentee ballots.
And I can't bring my husband's either, right?
You cannot. You have to bring your own.
Okay. All right. Any other general information? Otherwise, we'll move on to the reports in your packet. The Historic Preservation Commission, Ken.
No additions.
Library Board, Lynn.
No additions. We just want to make sure that we let people know that we are open and we want you to come out and enjoy and you don't wear masks.
But all right, then we'll move into the action portion of our agenda. The first thing tonight on the agenda is a preliminary resolution 2204 for a special assessment on UW Platteville property. And it appears you're going to do that.
Yes, Howard is taking some much needed vacation. So that's where I will be pinching Dan and I will be pinching for him. But this is something obviously that we're bringing to you for an action item tonight. Typically, we try to do information discussion and then action, but due to the kind of making sure we're trying to make move this along as fast as we can due to construction timelines and also trying to meet everything. That's why this is obviously in front of you tonight. So as the staff note indicates, under Wisconsin statute 66.0703, the city is required to perform a special assessment to request payment of over $50,000 from a state agency like the Board of Regents of the University of Wisconsin System, doing business as the University of Wisconsin Platteville. So if you recall, the sanitary sewer line needs to be replaced due to the age and condition. It is believed that the clay tile sanitary sewer line was installed around the time that the original easement was signed in 1908. Normally sanitary sewer lines will last 75 to 80 years. This line is well beyond its expanded lifespan. For future maintenance, it is best for the pipe to be relocated around the current outdoor track and artificial turf picture field, which can be seen in Exhibit 8. So under state statute 66.0703, the state building commission, the SBC, has 90 days to approve or reject the assessment. Per discussions with UW Platteville staff, the funds are available, but have to be approved by the SBC before contracts are let. The SBC is scheduled to meet in mid-May to discuss this issue. We need to conduct the special assessment process. The first step is to pass the preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment police powers. It puts UW Platteville and the SBC on notice of the intent and satisfies the legal conditions. In future common council meetings, we intend to provide a final resolution for consideration. So the budget and fiscal impact, the Water and Sewer Commission reviewed the options for replacing the line, and it was initially estimated that the additional cost to go around the UW Plateville facility is about $200,000. Unfortunately, based on current bids, this may be too low. So we have included an updated cost estimate in the report in Exhibit B. This was revised by Delta 3 based on the recent bids. If we do not follow strict state statutes and procedures, it is likely that the SBC would reject the payment. UW Platteville has budgeted and set aside the funds, but needs the SBC approval. If we do not do this, we could potentially be forfeiting the additional funding. So what we're looking for is essentially the recommendation from staff is to approve the attached preliminary resolution. So we'd be looking for a sample affirmative motion to approve the attached preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment police powers under Section 66.0703 of the Wisconsin statutes. And we've got the copy of the resolution in here as well as the exhibits and the new updated figures in your staff note.
Okay, questions? Questions? Okay, if there are no questions, do I hear any proposed action?
All right, make a motion to approve the attached preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment police powers under Section 66.0703 Wisconsin statutes.
I hear a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Isaac and a second by Ken to approve the motion to have a preliminary resolution declaring the intent to exercise special assessment police powers as prescribed under Section 660703 of the Wisconsin statutes. Candace will vote.
Kopf.
Yes.
Arts.
Yes.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Shanley.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the second action item on our agenda is the award of contract 1-22 Hickory and Gridley Reconstruction. So is that going to be you, Adam?
Me as well. Yes. So at the last council meeting, we obviously brought this to you as information and discussion. So we did receive the bids for Hickory and Gridley Reconstruction. So again, just to recap the project, just to reconstruct the South Hickory Street from Southwest Road to Gridley Avenue and Gridley Avenue from South Hickory Street to South Chestnut. The base bid is to reconstruct the water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and street, the entire length of the project. The base bid includes sidewalk on the south side of Gridley Avenue only to connect South Chestnut Street with Valley View Park and the sidewalk connection to Marquee Avenue. Alternate A is to install sidewalk along the east side of South Hickory Street along the house front, just starting at Hickory Street until the top of the hill at 485 South Hickory, creating a street crossing, then continuing on the west side to connect with existing sidewalks to be replaced at 515 Southwest Road. Alternate B is to install new chain link fence instead of removing and resetting the existing fence in Valley View Park. Currently, there is a sidewalk between Roundtree Commons and the retaining wall to connect South Chestnut Street with Marquee Avenue. Within the base bid, there will be a sidewalk for pedestrians on Gridley to get to South Chestnut safely. And an alternate for people to connect to Marquee without having to walk in a canyon. Alternate A will allow persons to walk past the houses and make a connection with Southwest Road. If we install sidewalk on the west side along the park, it would require low retaining walls for more extensive grading into the park. Put in on the side nearest the houses will require owners to shovel in the winter, but there are more apt to use the sidewalk. Crossing over from east to west at the top of the hill is a good location for visibility. Plus, the remaining houses and driveways on the east side down to Southwest Road are much higher than the road, and it would cause driveways to be abnormally steep. There is an existing sidewalk on the west side back to the driveway at 515 Southwest Road that the new sidewalk will tie into. The project map will show where the sidewalk is proposed across the street. Delta 3 is also placed at the proposed crossing location. Due to the quirky configuration of the right of way, there is no room for sidewalk between the curb and right of way near the curb by Valley View Park. Our Park and Recreation Director is recommending a driveway access near the north boundary of the park for a future parking lot. So the base bid requires the contractor to remove the fencing at the ball field in Valley View Park and resetting the fence as is. Alternate B would pay for new fencing instead of reinstalling the old fence. So to go over the budget and fiscal impacts again, so the 2022 capital improvement program budgeted 1,125,000 to complete this project. Of this amount, 625,000 is allocated in the city capital improvement plan budget and 500,000 is allocated in the water and sewer capital budget. When you remove the engineering allocation of 135,000, it leaves approximately 990,000 for construction. The base bid with both alternates is under budget. The Water and Sewer Commission awarded its portion of the bid on March 9. So the cost allocation is as follows. For the city portion, there would be $45,000 for engineering, 544,036.75 for construction base bid. The alternates would be $28,450. So the total is 617,041. We had budgeted 625,000. So that particular portion is under budget by just under 8. The water and sewer funding side was $90,000 for engineering, 403,423 for the construction. We did not have anything in alternates, so we budgeted 500,000. So we're just under 6, over $6,500 in savings there. So the staff is recommending awarding contract 122 for Hickory and Gridley Reconstruction alternatives, as agreed upon, to G Pro Escavating for $975,465.25.
Hey, questions?
Uh, pardon. Isaac. Oh, I don't recall. Was there going to be any lighting on either one of these crosswalks? Due to the fact that both are kind of right in a bend, once after a 90 degree turn. The street's pretty narrow. It is by the universities. The traffic does tend to speed up a little bit over there. Just curious, is it going to be like a lighting, which was on Main Street, Business 151 or anything?
Yep.
Isaac, Howard has been in contact with Alliant about at least getting a street light relocated there. I think Howard also touched base with you, Bob, about the existing lighting in the park, and there's not a lot. Originally, we thought there was a light pole that was really close to the crossing, but it's not. So we're working with Alliant to get that right installed right at the crosswalk.
The original fence that's there was put in by a service club. Is that correct?
That's correct. The Rotary Club.
The Rotary Club. And have we?
We're currently in conversations with them about potentially either sponsoring or again, looking at having some assistance in regards to that fence. Yes.
Any other questions?
Are there going to be crosswalk notification, like signs or lights or anything at the crosswalk?
We're not planning that at this time. Due to, there is a lot of traffic on it, but really it is still a very low volume street. And if we need to, we can paint a crosswalk. We can talk with the street department about that if it's necessary.
Sure. Any other questions? Otherwise, I would look for some, if we're ready to take action on contract 1-22 Hickory and Gridley Reconstruction.
I move to award.
122 Hickory and Gridley Reconstruction with alternates A and B to G Pro Excavating at the bid price of $975,464.25.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award contract 1-22 to G Pro Excavating, including alternatives A and B. Candace will vote.
Kopf.
Yes.
Arts.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Shanley.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on our agenda is budget amendment number two, position restructure, creating a recreation and community events coordinator and City Hall Office Assistant. Nicola.
Yes, hi there. So at the last meeting, we talked about this back in December 2021. We had two resignations that have Parks and Recreation Director Luke Peters and Administrative Assistant Debbie Sigworth. And that created two vacancies. And at that time, the city manager brought to the council a recommendation to restructure the positions and also create a recreation and community events coordinator position. And also to restructure the administrative assistant position to a City Hall Office Assistant position. Those three positions have now been filled and a calculation has been made of the overall impact to the 2022 general fund budget. The net change in wage cost for 2022 is an increase of 11,241 and 44 cents. And in benefit costs is an increase of 31,467.58. And we did note when we talked about this at the last meeting that when typically when positions are vacant during the budget cycle, the benefits for the position are budgeted at the maximum city cost to ensure that we cover whatever potential benefit plan might be selected by new employees. But because these positions were vacated after the budget cycle, we weren't able to do that. And so that is why we're seeing that net increase in the benefit cost of the 31,467. We also noted that the costs above reflect an allocation of the City Hall Office Assistant position at 50% to the general fund and 50% to the water and sewer utilities as opposed to the allocation of the former administrative assistant position, which was 75% to the general fund and 25% to the water and sewer utility. And this change in allocation reflects the reassignment of certain Parks and Recreation job functions from the administrative assistant position to the new recreation and community events coordinator position. And so the, the recommendation from staff to the council is to approve this budget amendment to increase general fund wages and benefits by $42,709.2. And for those, that increase to be funded by general funds deserves. Any questions?
Questions? Kathy.
Comment. Adam, you went some months ago when, I don't remember. Help remind me, you indicated that you're looking at a broader view of staff. Or are we?
Yep, I know where you're going. You're talking about the staffing analysis that we're going to be doing. Yes.
Yes.
Yep, so.
Because, um, obviously, we need to do this. But I would like to get us to a point where these kinds of things happen at budget time. So that's, we are anticipating maybe.
Right, yeah.
Realize that.
Yeah, this was kind of unexpected. So we had to, we had to look at it at the time, but you're hitting it on the head. What, that actually is one of the things that Carol is working on.
Okay.
He is right now doing kind of, the project he's been working on is looking at our organizational structure versus our municipal peers and kind of looking at, okay, what is, you know, our park and rec department versus Whitewater's versus, you know, and then thinking long-term as, okay, what is it like Oshkosh? Some of the bigger municipalities to kind of gauge what they're doing. And the plan is over the next couple of months, we're going to start meeting with departments and kind of analyzing that. Because what we would like to do is bring that entire plan in front of the council and be more proactive and say, okay, we realize that in the long term, the museum would like to have these type of staff positions. That's going to have this type of impact to the tax rate. And that way, just like you said, it's not this, we're just kind of like, okay, we got to move. It's more of a pre-planned of, okay, in 2023, we're going to be doing this. In 2024, we're going to be doing that. And we can kind of be more proactive in regards to moving the needle down the line. Instead of, you know, when these things occur, it's like, okay, we got to scramble now and look at how really should we have that department? Yep.
Thank you. Hey, any other questions or comments? If not, I would seek a motion.
I'll move to approve the budget amendments to increase general fund wages and benefits by $42,709.2 for the restructured positions and parks and recreation and City Hall to be funded by the general reserves.
That's okay. Okay, we have a motion by Jason, a second by Lynn to approve budget amendment two. Candace will vote.
Kopf.
Yes.
Arts.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Shanley.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols. Motion carries.
Okay, the final action item on our agenda tonight is the Runde Chevrolet Notice of Circumstances. Adam.
Yes, so per Wisconsin State Statute 893.80, within 120 days after the happening of an event giving rise to a claim, written notice of the circumstance of the claim signed by the party agent or attorney is served on a government subdivision or agency. So on January 24, 2022, the city of Platteville received from Jan Z Barton, an attorney with Boardman Clark, a notification of circumstances claims against the city of Platteville for Runde Chevrolet Incorporated. The claim indicates the city of Platteville constructed a walking path along Business US Highway 151 in the city. The walking path crossed a driveway servicing Runde Chevrolet's property at right angles. The change in grade has caused damage to the driveway in that vehicles, in particular trucks, carrying automobile inventory bottom out at that portion of the driveway. The problem is not limited to car carrier trucks. The cost of the required repairs is approximately $160,000. So city staff, when receiving the notice of circumstances, immediately forwarded a copy of this to EMC Insurance, the city's general liability insurance carrier for review. The claim was assigned to Andrew Caruso, a senior claims adjuster. On March 3, 2022, city manager Adam Rico received notification from Andrew Caruso that EMC Insurance had reviewed the notice of circumstance for Runde Chevrolet and asked that the city of Platteville formally disallow the claim due to statutory requirements. The disallowance letter must come from the governing body itself. So currently, there is no budgetary or fiscal impact at this time. And per our general liability insurance carriers recommendations, city staff would recommend the common council officially deny Runde Chevrolet's notice of circumstance in conformance with Wisconsin State Statute 893.80. EMC Insurance also expressed the response letter and discussion must be kept brief because any addition to the above can be viewed as a complication which may negate the disallowance. So again, this is not something we want to discuss in great detail further. There is a copy of the disallowance letter that would be sent if this was approved. And that is what staff is looking for, the recommendation based on the state statute.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
All right, make a motion in, in conformance with Wisconsin Statute 893.80. The city of Platteville officially denied the notice of circumstances claim for Runde Chevrolet and direct city staff to provide official notification on city letterhead.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Isaac and a second by Jason to deny the notice of circumstances claim for Runde Chevrolet and direct city staff to provide official notification. Candace will vote.
Kopf.
Yes.
Arts.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Shanley.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Okay, folks, that concludes the, the action portion of our agenda. So we'll move into the information and discussion. First of all, we have contract 2-22 Cedar Street Reconstruction. So is this going to be you again?
It's going to be me and then Dan will answer obviously any questions you might have in regards to that. But so the project is to reconstruct Cedar Street from Chestnut to Hickory. It will install new sanitary sewer, water, storm sewer, sidewalk, curb and gutter and street for the entire length. There were two alternate bids. Alternate A is to replace the old four-inch water main from fourth to Chestnut. And alternate B was to replace the sanitary sewer from fourth to Chestnut. There were five bidders. So the bid, the attached bid tabulation is provided in the staff notes. The low bidder is Rural Construction of Dodgeville with a base bid of $1,269,893. They bid $168,788 for alternate A and $98,660 for alternate B. Rural Construction had low bids for the alternates. Therefore, any combination of the bait bid and alternates would keep Rural Construction as the low bidder. So the budget and fiscal impact for this project is the 2022 capital improvement program budgeted 1,185,000 to complete this project. Of this amount, 650,000 is allocated in the city capital improvement plan. Of this amount, six hundred and fifty thousand is allocated in the city capital improvement plan budget for borrowing and five hundred and thirty-five thousand is allocated in the water and sewer capital budget. When you remove the engineering allocation of a hundred and forty-two thousand, it leaves approximately one million forty-three thousand dollars for construction. The base bid is over budgeted in all categories of funding, primarily due to general inflation since the project budget was considered in the summer of twenty-twenty-one. Note the comparison of different line items in the Delta Three recommendation letter. We normally budget for about five percent inflation year over year. In this case, we have storm sewer pipe going up fourteen to twenty-four percent, asphalt going up only eight percent and road gravel going up fifty percent. For water and sewer items, it is worse. The Water and Sewer Commission will be considering awarding the bid on April thirteenth. So the cost allocation would be as follows. For the city funding portion, it would be engineering of seventy-one thousand dollars, construction of six hundred and forty-three thousand five forty-nine fifty for a total budget of or costs of seven hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents. We had budgeted six hundred and fifty thousand. So as you can see, currently, right now, the bid is over by sixty-four thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents. For the water and sewer portion, the engineering was seventy-one thousand dollars, construction was estimated at six hundred and twenty-six three forty-three fifty, which brings the total cost to six hundred and ninety-seven thousand three hundred and forty-three fifty. Again, the budget was five hundred and thirty-five thousand. So that is looking at being over about a hundred and sixty-two three forty-three fifty. So this obviously is one of the first projects we have seen has been a direct result because of the inflation, COVID and everything else that currently is being experienced in the climate. So there obviously are some considerations in regards to, you know, how particularly the city could fund this. So there have been a couple of options that have been laid out. Number one is you could obviously adjust the budget to increase the borrowing. Two, you could use city or utility reserves to cover the amount over budgets if available. Number three, you could look for ways for value engineering cost reductions such as not replacing all sidewalk, not installing fiber optic conduit, narrowing the streets and eliminating parking on one or both sides of the street. I think Dan and I have already had some kind of preliminary conversations with that. We don't really feel that is going to be a true way where we're gonna find a lot of cost reductions, but it is certainly something we could dig into further. Obviously, you could reduce or eliminate other projects. Potentially, both of these projects could be reduced to only go into what is currently budgeted. That could be a conversation you could obviously have with the bidders. And then obviously, the final option is to reject the bid, but that should only be done if we believe the prices will come down quickly and soon. Staff obviously believes the opposite, that bidding later will only have increased prices in the bids. Or what we're kind of seeing right now in the market is our anticipation is that these costs are going to kind of become the standard. Is that we're not really going, we're not anticipating at least for the next two years that we're going to see reduction in these costs. This more than likely is going to become the norm going forward. So the staff recommendation obviously would be awarding the contract two twenty-two Cedar Street reconstruction to Rural Construction with no alternate bid at the bid price of one million two hundred and sixty-nine eight ninety-three. So obviously, we're gonna go back and do some financial analysis, but when this comes back for you to perform potential action, more than likely, the recommendation that we will be making as staff due to the cost estimates here would be to probably exceed the, we got two options, either exceed the borrowing capacity and do this because both of these cost estimates are not going to have a drastic impact in regards to, you know, when we're talking sixty-four thousand and a hundred and sixty-two on a large scale borrowing, that is not going to have a huge impact in regards to the interest rate or additional fees. So that we do feel that's comfortable. Otherwise, the other option more than likely would be that we would try to obviously reduce to be within the budget and try to figure out what that would mean. We'd obviously have to do some review with Delta Three Engineering in regards to if we were to go with the budgeted figures, potentially, you know, what gap, how much road does that leave out? And then what would happen then is when we go into the twenty-twenty-three CIP discussion in the budget, this obviously would be at the top of the list to complete this. You know, there are obviously some concerns with that is when you're doing a project, do you really want to cause the destruction of going back and forth again with having, you know, another delay and coming to come back? So those are all things we would obviously need to consider. But that's kind of what we're looking at. So obviously, if you have any questions, Dan's here to answer any questions about the project itself. And we're here to answer the questions you might have about the financial and things.
Okay, folks, questions? So this is not on for action tonight. This is on for discussion. So let's hear your questions.
I'm just wondering if you do stall, this is for Dan. If you do it in parts like Adam was saying, um, how much that's like, what kind, what risk are we taking? Like, will it be actually complete the way it's needed to be? Like, is that really an option?
Yeah, that's always an option. Yeah, that's always an option. So really, this project has three blocks. You have from Hickory Street to Short Street. You have Short Street to Elm Street and then Elm Street to Chestnut Street. So you actually have three segments that you could actually break this up into. When you start breaking things up into phases, traditionally, you have to redo some of the work. For example, in two thousand and fifteen, we redid Four Street all the way from Smith Park all the way to Main Street. And since then, we've redone Dewey Street and we've redone Lewis Street. Well, we've had to go through and redo those intersections because by the time you start driving heavy equipment on those intersections, they break up. So we've had to repave those. This would be similar. So if we took out the block between, say, Hickory and Short or from Elm up to Chestnut Street, there will definitely be some redoing of the work on those intersections. So it, even though it saves money today, it is going to cost a little bit more money in the future. Now, unfortunately, in this area, we don't have a situation like we have EWP with underneath the track with the sewer where it's imminent failure. But we do have the risk of having a water main break. I mean, Cedar Street has a history of water main breaks. So that's always a risk that you run whenever you delay a project. And and I know we've, we've looked at some of the value engineering already. By eliminating, say, for example, the the block between Elm Street and Chestnut Street, we're gonna, we're gonna save about fifty thousand dollars. So that kind of gives you where we're at, not just on the street portion of it. I didn't really look at too much with the water and sewer yet, but just to kind of give you an example, that would be probably comparable to what you would also if you low, if reduced a project from Hickory up to Short Street, maybe a little bit more savings as a slightly longer stretch. So we have to look at multiple things on this project, eliminating a block. We are looking at widening the street of from Hickory to just east of Short Street. Right now, it's twenty-eight feet wide. And if anybody drives down that street, whether it's in the summertime or the winter, it's very narrow. There's cars on one side at all times. So and then in that area between Hickory Street and Short Street, we have the ability to widen out to thirty-six feet. That would allow for parking on both sides if the city was so choose so. But even reducing it from thirty-six feet to thirty-two feet, which is typically the minimum width for a parking on one side, that only saves about thirteen or fourteen thousand dollars. So now you'd have to eliminate the block between Elm and Chestnut and between Hick and reduce it down to to thirty-two feet between Hickory and Short. So it's going to take many things. And that's just on the street portion of it. The water and sewer, the price increases were just crazy. I think, you know, we had some tremendously large price increases in the water and sewer portion of it. And I still haven't figured out how to eliminate portions of the project to get it down within budget. That one's tricky. I mean, with the street, we have some options, but is narrowing up a heavily used street for parking, I don't know if that's a solution or not. I know we talked about trying to save money and narrowing up streets, but in this particular area, parking is a premium, especially so close to university. I know in the staff report, it talked about maybe reducing sidewalks. Well, due to the number of homes on that street, there are always people walking on this, on that sidewalk, on both sides, on on top of it as well. So I don't, even though that's an option, I'm not sure, you know, long run, a long term, excuse me, if that's the best option. So as Adam said, I mean, prices are going up every single bid. Hickory Street was the first bid, so that set the price. And every, every week, the prices have gone up. We made the adjustment to EWP sewer as a result, because we know prices have gone up and will go up. Our other bids that we have left, we are actually backing them in now. We know what the budget is, and now we're backing them in to make sure that we're okay. So.
Okay, so I know your recommendation, Dan, was to award the alternates too, which adds another two hundred and fifty grand to the total. And that's all water and sewer work.
Correct.
Is, have there been a lot of breaks in there or is it just a undersized main?
Um, on, I believe the block by St. Mary's, I think there's been one or two breaks in that area.
Yeah, because I don't remember seeing those on any report.
I think it's been a while. And I know there's some issues with the sanitary sewer in those areas. I think, I I believe that as the project was under design, the water and sewer department brought that to our attention that if the prices came in favorable, that may be a nice continuation to get those two areas taken care of. You're talking four inch mains, well, obviously, the city's trying to eliminate those. And there's six inch sanitary sewer, which is also undersized.
But the main, the main thing that we're talking of, the main contract is from Hickory to Chestnut.
Correct.
On Cedar. Any other questions?
I do have a question. Dan, it said from, excuse me, Hickory to Short, you're gonna, the street would be widened to thirty-six feet and the remainder of the street will be widened to thirty-two feet. What is the, that area now?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight?
Yep.
Well, the area from short to Hickory is twenty-eight, right?
Yep, actually, the entire street from Hickory all the way up to Chestnut Street is approximately twenty-eight feet.
Twenty-eight, so you, okay, so thirty-two. I'm just thinking because what was it widened to on Market Street?
Market Street was widened to thirty-two.
Thirty-two. So the, they cut back into some.
Of the nice, well, the difference between this project and Market Street is that Market Street had a narrower right of way. And so we have more right of way to work with, which allows us, which is why we're, we're able to go thirty-six feet wide between Hickory Street and Short Street. And then between approximately a hundred and fifty feet or so east of Short Street, the narrow, the right of way begins to narrow. And then it transitions into a narrower right of way as you get closer to Elm Street. So that's how we determined, so that we had a decent terrace between the sidewalk and the curb. So this also won't be like Market Street where we have a very narrow terrace. Even in the area where we're thirty-six feet wide, we'll slap a six foot wide terrace.
I I know that there isn't a lot of space in front of some houses right now.
Yes.
So, and the rationale for increasing the width?
So the, for for twenty-eight feet, current width is too narrow for parking on one side. So at a minimum, we have to go thirty-two feet. And when I met with staff, because of the amount of cars that are parked on the street, specifically on the the western half, and we had the ability with the right of way and still be able to provide a six foot wide terrace, then we were able to allow that to happen. So we can potentially get parking on both sides.
And so the parking that's occurring there is not commuter parking. It's people who live in those homes.
Correct.
So those homes have inadequate parking. Evidently.
Is Adam, I have a question for you. So I believe, well, I believe during budget time, we allocated a hundred thousand dollars for the Legion Field Park up by the Bruski Center. And then when we got the grant awarded, I believe that was gonna cover that as well. So is there a way that we could move that money around to put towards this project? So.
Yeah, so that's something where when we go back and actually, if this come, when this comes back as an action item, we'll kind of do more of a deeper dive with Director Mauer, kind of look at all of the budgetary options and truly what that is. Because if there's ways we can find more ways to shift capital projects, we certainly can do that.
That would, that would cover the over budget, at least on the street side.
Right.
Still do thirty-five thousand off that on there, so.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not highly in favor of in of digging into reserves. And I'm certainly not in favor of, last year, we already extended over our budget figure for borrowing. And I'm not real pleased with that thought at this point in the year.
And then looking in, you know, with the alternatives, by cutting out some of the alternatives, sure, you're saving some money now. But if all of a sudden you have something happen, you're tearing up another brand new street, which is gonna cost money in the long run. So.
But then this, this section of water and sewer from Chestnut to Fourth, I mean, that's gonna take new, I mean, what have we done? I don't see any plan for uh, putting street back in there. I mean, I don't see, I mean, you're gonna dig up the street, but it's not part of the street reconstruction project.
Correct. So we're doing full street reconstruction from Hickory to
Right.
Chestnut. And then from Chestnut to Fourth is just the water and sewer. So it'd be comparable to what we did last year in Commerce Street. Where we just replaced the water main, we just replaced the sewer, and then we're just gonna put in two inches of asphalt to cover.
So water and sewer will have to pay that.
Yes.
That won't be part of the
Correct.
general fund. But is that pricing include, that pricing isn't included in the current bids?
That's, that's correct. That's the, that's the base bid is from Hickory to Chestnut. And that's why the alternate is, are what they are. So they're like two separate projects.
So, but in the alternates, when you have the alternate A and alternate B, is the asphalt to replace it included?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Otherwise, you will look to see what our folks can come up with knowing that Isaac has given a couple ideas and there's resistance to borrowing more and dipping into reserves. So. Okay, thank you. So next on the agenda then is award of contract four dash twenty-two West Main Street covered.
Playground first, I think.
Oh. Not on the agenda that I had.
Oh.
Interesting.
Interesting.
Oh, yes. Okay, sorry. Award of contract three twenty-two inclusive playground equipment.
There, alright.
There we go.
Yes, so this project is to purchase and install the playground equipment and ADA required surfacing in the Platteville Exclusive Playground in Smith Park. The cost is a hundred percent funded by the Community Development Block Grant COVID CBGBD funding. So on March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, quotes were submitted by four firms. The Platteville Inclusive Playground Committee are here tonight and will be reviewing the quotes and recommending award to the one that most clearly meets their needs. They did also come in front of last night, the Park Forestry and Recreation Committee and gave a presentation. So I will now kick it over to kind of Christina here to talk a little bit more about that. But obviously, there will be future contracts to be awarded for the grant eligible construction and the grant ineligible items such as the, you know, certain, the pavilion that we've talked about, the stone shelter, those type of things. The grant eligible construction items will include grading and preparation for equipment installation, the parking area on Fifth Avenue, cross park pathways, the parking lot by the pickleball courts and the sidewalk on Second Street. This will be called contracts three dash two two A. And then the grant ineligible items such as restroom conversion of the stone shelter, pavilion and additional equipment items will be called contract three dash two two B. So again, just from the budget and fiscal impacts, the CDBG CV grant budgeted one million dollars for this portion of the project. There is an additional one point two million for contract three point two two A to make up the entire project of two point two million. So contracts, again, three point two A will be presented later. The funds raised by PIP will fund contract three dash eleven B for the stone shelter restroom upgrades, pavilion and any additional equipment. And so now the Platteville Inclusive Playground Group will verbally present their recommendations to the council.
Thank you, Adam. Good evening, Christina Burke, back again to give you an update. We want to take you through the playground options, but then also kind of give you a general project update at the end. And I'm here tonight with Morgan Arnold and Kim Zelinski, my co-writers. So we're gonna take you through kind of playground by playground for the four companies that submitted. And before we do that, just to say, we had four excellent companies submit designs. We would do well with any of the companies. They all have high quality product. They were all accessible and accommodating. They all have good equipment to offer. We obviously have a preference and we'll tell you at the end. It was unanimous, not only on our team, but also with Park and Rec together, our recommendation will be. So the first one I'm gonna show you is Lee Recreation. And I'm gonna turn this to the side so I can look at the same picture you are. And I know that these are detailed and, you know, a lot to look at. But just to point out a few things as we go through, through these as well, we are looking tonight at the design company. And that's really what we're gonna ask you to vote on on April twelfth is to, ideally, we'll all agree, but to select a design company for this project. There are elements to the design that may change after that. We're still working with our local professionals on color selection. We've been very thoughtful and researched in every step of the way as far as equipment that we've selected. Now, as we get to the end here, we want to do the same thing in regards to color to make sure that we're being as inclusive as possible, thinking not only of, you know, those that are colorblind or visually impaired, but also those that might be on the autism spectrum, ADHD, anxiety, everybody as a whole, to make sure that not only our equipment, but our colors are inclusive and welcoming. So please look at the companies and the overall equipment, but not necessarily the colors tonight. So Lee Recreation, they are based out of Cambridge. based out of Cambridge, Wisconsin, and they have Burke Equipment. It's made in Fond du Lac, Wisconsin. Um, and they were able to provide us a, a great design that had everything that was on our high priority list. Um, so I'll mention a few things here. It's hard for me to turn and look. So as I mentioned, I'm Kim can kind of point with the laser. Um, is there a laser? There is, Jody. It's not very bright. Okay. Um, we have not only, uh, a tall challenging climber there with some exciting slides. Um, we have a ninja ropes warrior course type, um, experience. Um, we have musical equipment. Uh, we also have a Simon Says, uh, interactive game. Um, it's this, uh, one that you kind of, it's actually self-powered. So you crank it up and you get two or three games out of it. Um, it's a multi-person game. Um, so people of all ages and abilities can play, all heights for all ages of children. Uh, and, um, kind of a unique piece that they had there. Um, we also have several, uh, experiences that you actually don't even have to transfer out of your wheelchair for. Uh, we have, uh, a swing-like experience where you can roll right on, um, and it kind of moves back and forth, almost like a, a mini boat. Um, there's also a swing bridge that you can roll right on. Uh, and then, um, we also, you can see it better in, um, the next view, but we also have, um, uh, an inclusive orbit, which is a merry-go-round type ride that you can wheel right on and has a bench with it as well. Um, I guess just to point out too, um, obviously we have a lot of different pieces that are accessible. I had a few people ask me, is, is this, um, you know, is this for everyone is, and, and it's really is designed for everyone. Um, we have pieces that are designed to be as accessible as possible. Um, and designed to try to incorporate, um, as many age brackets as possible. Um, but there's elements there for everyone regardless of who you are and we want everybody to come play here. Um, so let's see, do we have a good view of the M on this one here or not? Next one, let's scroll down to the next one. Um, so this next one, you can see, um, right where she's pointing there, uh, one of the things that's important to Platteville or, or, um, kind of a staple of Platteville is our M. And there's a cross-section of people that will never be able to climb the M, uh, for one reason or another. Um, and so the design team really liked the idea of having a small M. This is a four-foot M, uh, that, um, will have kind of some climbers on one side that if you have some ability to pull yourself up, you'd be able to go down, climb up this M and go down a roller slide on the other side. Um, and, uh, so you can say you conquered the M. And we really thought that that was a neat piece to bring in, uh, to the design. Um, and if, if you're not able to go up yourself, you can have someone wheel you up to the top and, and help you. Um, it's also one that, uh, if you're not able to go all the way to the top, if you get tired, that slide is designed that you can just kind of climb on wherever you're at and slide down. Um, we actually have two roller slides. Uh, you may not know, but those with, uh, cochlear ear, uh, implants can't use a plastic slide at a playground because of the static. Uh, they can only use metal slides. So we do have two metal slides, um, in this playground design as well. Um, we also have some talking tubes, um, for auditory experience. We have, uh, sensory panels on our ramping, uh, and a variety of different sensory experiences. Our ramping, uh, I really love our ramping design. Uh, that one shows it better. Thank you, Kim. Um, because it's really integrated. So every platform has at least two ways on and off of it. Um, some of them even have more and they're all interconnected. So you, they'll, well, I can't say they'll never be a traffic jam. It'll really reduce, um, any traffic flow, um, challenges and just incorporate a lot of fun bopping between the platforms. So, um, all right, let's see. We also have, um, uh, multi-person, um, teeter totter. You can have like ten kids on there. Um, we have another type of, uh, merry-go-round inclusive spinner. Um, and I can't see it on here, but we have a scavenger hunt, um, just as an extra layer of fun in the playground. Um, so this design really hit all of our high priority things. You will notice that it's less themed than some of the other ones. Uh, as the design team worked, uh, and design team, I'm going to say is probably thirty hours into working on, um, not only the design and the elements and the equipment, but working with each of the four companies. So we have really put a lot of thought into every, um, square inch of this playground. Um, I didn't point out the dual zip lines on the top right. We do have dual zip lines. Um, one accessible seat and one standard seat and then a variety of different swings too. Um, but, uh, we really decided that the, the real theme was the wow factor of this playground. Um, they, the equipment that we can put in here, the variety of equipment, the exciting and different equipment that we can have and the accessibility of the playground, that whole package of the wow factor to draw people in, um, to us was more important than having a particular farm theme, um, or, or nature theme to it. And as we got further into the design process, we also started to feel a little bit restricted just by, um, if we went just a farm theme, we felt like that didn't capture all the age brackets that maybe focused a little bit more on the younger brackets. Whereas if we went just broader with our theme, um, and, uh, focus more on the equipment that we could bring in, we could bring in more for every age group. So that's why you'll see that. This is eighteen thousand six hundred and ten square feet. Uh, and I didn't point out either that at the top left there, you'll see four pieces of out, outdoor adult and elderly friendly exercise equipment. Um, when we say that we're bringing in something for everybody, we mean it. This is, we have equipment for six months, um, up to as old as you can imagine. Um, so you know, we're right next to, um, Park Place there. Um, and I think that anyone in our community and particularly our residents there will enjoy coming over and, uh, we like to call it our live TV section. So it's outside of the play space, but overlooking the playground. Um, and who wouldn't want to watch kids play while they worked out? Because that's entertainment in itself. So, um, all right. Any questions about this design before I move on to the, the next one? Okay. All right, Chrissy.
Um, it's not a question specifically about that design, but you made a couple of comments about, um, the slides. Are that, is there going to be signage? I mean, the average person wouldn't have any idea what the individual pieces of some of those equipment are for. Will, I mean, people, the young people, older people that would be drawn there, will they automatically know what those are? As, I'm not making myself clear.
Yeah.
The individual components.
Mm-hmm.
Are they, is there going to be a sign to say how to use them or they're made for? Like the, um, I just thought it was interesting about the plastic slides and the metal slides. I wouldn't have had any idea. There's so many unique pieces to that, no matter which design you use.
So anybody can use that, that metal roller slide. It's, it's one of my children's favorite slides, um, when we've gone to places that have it. Um, it's actually my favorite slide too. Um, so, uh, anybody can use it. So I don't think that there'd be particular signage on the individual pieces like that. I think if you have a cochlear implant, you have probably been educated by your medical provider that you can't go on the plastic slides. Uh, good question though. Uh, so just as we go, these are close-ups of a, a couple of, that's an inclusive spinner and the musical elements. And then the bottom right is that serenity spot, which was included in that first design as well. That's just kind of a quiet space that you can regroup and recharge. Um, as, uh, a child, if you're feeling overwhelmed before you join back in. Um, and, uh, then we'll go on to the next one, uh, and, uh, that's Park Planet. Uh, and, um, they had, uh, a great number of, uh, uh, unique pieces as well. Um, they have the zip line that they included. They included three pieces of exercise equipment. Uh, they also, um, had a ramping structure with higher level slides, um, and a great climbing, um, ninja warrior course as well. Uh, and, um, then their toddler area, um, had a, a farm theme to it too. Um, you can go on to, uh, their square footage was seventeen thousand two hundred and one square feet. Commercial recreation specialists. Um, they had, um, the small square footage, sixteen thousand nine hundred square feet. Uh, but they also had the most themed, uh, of the, uh, designs. Um, we felt like, um, they did a good job, um, incorporating that, that rural theme. Um, and, uh, they had some unique pieces that we, um, did, that we liked the design of their M, uh, with the roller slide, uh, on that top left. Uh, and I didn't mention actually on that first one, um, this, they all, all three designs here that I've shown you have it. We also included a stage just as a nod to the history of, um, Smith Park. Being, uh, originally a campground where people would come and put on performances and, um, children love to perform. Um, so, um, three of the four designs, um, including that first one have a stage area, um, where children can, uh, play make-believe. Even has a little ticket booth that you can pretend to sell tickets, um, and some backdrop panels that you can hide behind until it's your turn to come out and perform. So, um, that was one thing I overlooked showing you. Um, you can't see it very well in this picture, but this has a, a great boulder, uh, climbing, uh, boulder that we really liked. Uh, and, uh, it was wide enough that you could push a wheelchair through it, um, which was pretty unique. Uh, and, um, they did have a large ramping structure. Um, and it didn't have as many sensory experiences on it, um, as the first two. Um, we preferred, um, the first two large structures better. Um, but overall, um, we thought they did a good job with their theme. Uh, and next one here is Gerber Leisure. Uh, Gerber Leisure is, uh, let me get to that square footage, eighteen thousand two hundred and two square feet. Um, we liked several of their pieces, uh, and, um, they had high quality pieces. Uh, however, for our money and our budget, which they all had the same million dollar budget, um, this company was not able to give us both a large ramping structure, which was on our high priority list and a ropes challenging course. Um, so they chose to include in their design, uh, the ropes course. Um, they had a great ropes course. It's pretty exciting. Um, if we could, if our budget was endless, we would include things from each company. Um, they all had pieces that we really liked. Um, but it was important to us to have that large ramping structure and those higher, um, exciting slides in addition to the other pieces. Um, they also did not include any exercise equipment, um, and neither did, um, commercial recreation specialist. So the last two didn't include any exercise equipment either, which we felt was important, um, to catch that older generation. Um, and those adults that would want to join in outdoor, um, play as well. So, huh. That brings us to our end vote here, which was unanimous as our team, uh, and also, um, Park and Rec agreed with us. We voted in favor of Lee Recreation. Um, and, um, they've been great to work with. Like I said, any of the companies would be high quality, um, designs and, and service well here in Platteville. Um, but we really felt strongly, um, that we connected with Lee Recreation's design, um, that it met all of our high priority requests. Um, and, um, that we feel it will, um, provide us with the, the best design, uh, for our community. And we do have, if you want to, uh, pull them up, we have some blown up pictures just to see it a little closer. We'll put them on some chairs up here so you can, um, see. Uh, and, um, let's see. Other things I wanted to tell you. While they're pulling those up so you can see them, I'm just going to give you a brief update. Um, fundraising, we plan to continue to fundraise for the next five weeks. Um, we can accept donations at any time. But we plan to make our equipment orders, uh, the first week in May. Uh, and so, um, we're really kind of doing a final push here these last five weeks, um, to reach our, our goal. Um, and to see how much bonus equipment we can add and, and, um, just make sure that we are able to fund, uh, long-term maintenance fund as well.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
So our current, uh, donations are at two million two hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-three. Um, so our project to get it in the ground, uh, estimated was two point two. So we are in the ground, um, with our project at current pricing. Um, the three main reasons to continue to fundraise are, one, um, supplies are going up significantly at a fast rate lately. And so we want to make sure that we are, are able to keep up with the changing cost of supplies. Uh, two, the design team has about five pieces of bonus equipment that they're interested in adding, um, one of which is that climbing boulder. Uh, and three, um, we want to establish a long-term maintenance fund. So those are the three reasons we're continuing to fundraise, um, beyond that two point two million. Um, and we plan to kind of reassess where we're at, uh, in about five weeks, determine how much bonus equipment we can add, uh, and go from there. Um, now our play space, um, allotted was twenty-five thousand square feet. This design is eighteen thousand six hundred and ten. Um, so there is room for that bonus equipment. And we have talked with, um, Park and Rec and, um, Delta Three about, uh, uh, potentially fencing in and, and cementing, uh, the pathway at that twenty-five thousand square feet like it is designed in our, um, CDVG, uh, budget, um, so that, um, we could just cement that extra space. Um, we could do things like hopscotch or foursquare there, um, and cement is one of the cement and aggregate, aggregate are the two options as a base for equipment. So if we chose to cement that space and just put in some simple games in that area, um, it would allow us to be prepared for future expansion, um, and just be ready to go ahead and put it in if we decided in the future to, whether it was at the end of April, when we're ordering things, we can expand into that space. Or even down the road, if somebody wanted to donate something, it would already be prepped and ready. Um, so I think that that would be an advantage and it's already prepared in our budget. So it makes sense. Um, but that's something the design team is considering. Upcoming dates, April ninth and tenth, we have a volunteer event weekend, um, where we're going to have volunteers going around, um, with flyers, um, throughout Platteville and the surrounding communities. Uh, and that's just to help spread word about the project and increase excitement. April twenty-first, uh, after you guys vote on April twelfth, with April twenty-first, we're going to have a design sneak peek at the Borowski Center from five to seven. Um, so that the community can come and see the design. We'll have these, but we'll also blow up, um, pictures of our bonus equipment that we're interested, uh, in. So that the community can see those as well. Uh, and we'll be on hand to answer any questions. And then May thirty-first, we plan to have a groundbreaking, uh, ceremony at Smith Park at four PM. So that's upcoming agenda that we have.
Thank you, Christina, Kim and Morgan. You guys have done a tremendous job. Uh, I think Bob probably is happy that he has such a competent, organized and well-oiled machine to work with. And at some point in time, uh, we'd like to see the names of this de- design team that spent this incredible amount of time getting, uh, working with these people. Okay. Uh, Qua- Bob, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I would like to make a comment, uh, because it was unanimous by the Parks and Rec for this Lee. And one of the reasons was, is we already have a rapport with them. We, they've already installed and they are local. So I mean, that was a, a great consideration and not to mention, it was very pleasing to the eyes. So.
Okay. Questions of Christina, Morgan and/or Kim or Adam, I guess, or Bob. Anybody with questions?
I, I have a question. Um, so the ground launching is anticipated for May.
Groundbreaking. The groundbreaking is for May. Um, so we're, we're, our plan is order equipment that first week in May. It takes roughly sixteen weeks to get in. Um, the actual, um, you as a council will select your general contractor on May tenth. Um, we'll have the groundbreaking May thirty-first. Elements of the project will kick off in June, but there's a lot to be done before the playground equipment would actually go in. Um, Dan and Delta Three and Adam, they've got an order of, um, projects as far as the, the, the bathroom and the, um, pathways and the parking lot and, and other elements. So our equipment would likely go in, I'm going to say Sept- September-ish. Does that sound about right, Adam?
Yep.
Okay, so the parent that takes their kid to park all the time, how will they feel the effect of this happening? Will they feel the effect of this, um, happening, this transition happening to some, what does that do? What does that look like to parent that needs to take kids to the park?
I know that, um, the city that Adam and, and Dan have been working hard to minimize the impact, um, that patrons will feel at Smith Park. Um, and, and thinking thoughtfully about each part of it so that, um, things aren't moved or disrupted, um, before necessary. Um, to try to keep that maintained, but Adam may have a better, um,
Actually, Bob is
Oh, Bob.
Sitting there like anxious.
Yeah, she, uh, said just what we feel is that we want Smith Park to stay Miss, Smith Park until, you know, the ground is broken. Uh, we are going to analyze each piece of equipment and see where it should be. Maybe it should be on a, a different part of Smith Park. But the committee, we kind of talked about that in, in detail.
Parks Recreation.
Yes.
Versus the inclusive playground. So, yeah.
As soon as it's decided how it works, how do we communicate that to grandma to take her kids to the park every week? Like what happens? What is, do you have that a plan, a plan for that?
Yeah. Also, don't forget that this, this playground is all-inclusive. So that means everybody gets to play on this, you know, it's just, uh,
Oh, I'm looking forward to swinging.
Yeah, absolutely.
No, I think, yeah, to your question, Lynn, that's where, you know, as a, when we're aware of, you know, No, I think, yeah, to your question, Lynn, that's where, you know, as a, when we're aware of, you know, ensuring that we have all the dates lined up. And because that's part of the grant process, we got to make sure we have, you know, the funding, everything needs to be in line. We're doing all the P D O dot M R Ts and everything else. Um, but what will happen then is we'll obviously work, as staff will work with Jody, we'll work with everybody to make sure that we put information on the website. If we have to do something, you know, we may even talk about going in front of you, making sure we're getting on the radio and doing all the appropriate kind of communication methods to say, okay, you know, we're all super excited this is happening, but is there going to be a disruption? Yes, there definitely is. I don't think there's any question. But what we'll try to do is make sure we mitigate, you know, and explain, okay, here's the, here's what's going on. Well, as we talked about, we'll look at staff, work with Park and Forestry and Recreation, determine, okay, maybe we can have some temporary options for people to utilize at Smith Park until it is, we'll have to play all that out. Um, but we'll make sure that, yeah, once we kind of know when the green light is going and when construction is happening, we'll make sure we get those updates out.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a question. Um, I'm not familiar with the different equipment you're talking about. And so I haven't been able to see what you're talking about. And how long has this equipment been around? And with how long have people had parks like this?
Well, parks like this have been around for a long, a, a long time, decades. Um, Lee Recreation itself has been in business for twenty-six years, putting in this type of playground here in the Midwest. Um, and, uh, if you're asking, you know, kind of, are you asking how long it's expected to last? Is that your question?
I'm asking how long it is expected to last.
Sure, I've got that for you.
And did you visit some of these areas, some of these playgrounds?
Yes, we have. We have actually explored several of the different playgrounds.
And are they located nearby?
No, that's, that's part of the reason we want to put one in Southwest Wisconsin. Most of them are quite a distance. The nearest one you could visit would be the Miracle League of Dubuque, um, which is about a forty-five minute drive. Um, and beyond that, you're traveling over an hour, um, and many of them, two or more hours to see the nearest ones. So this will really put us on the map in Southwest Wisconsin, uh, as, uh, an asset and a leader in inclusiveness um, and a destination for families all throughout Southwest Wisconsin.
So we had, you have information about how long they last?
Yes, so while it's not a guarantee, their estimated lifespan is thirty years for the equipment and the estimated lifespan for the port in place is twenty-five to thirty years. Um, the actual guarantees and warranties vary, um, based on the pieces of equipment, um, and the elements of the equipment from three years to a hundred years, you know, depending on if you're talking about the hardware versus another element. Um, but the estimated lifespan is thirty and then twenty-five to thirty for the port in place.
Okay.
You're welcome. Any other?
Eileen's looking forward to the zip line. She can hardly wait.
You know, Eileen, you're going to love it. It's going to be so much fun. And I didn't even mention, I, I totally skipped over, we have a, um, like a, a multi-person hammock swing experience too, plus, you know, the musical elements. I mean, it's going to be great.
All right. Well, great. Thank you. And we'll look forward to, uh, taking action at our next meeting. Thank you so much. Okay, a word of contract now, four dash twenty-two West Main Street Culvert.
Yes, uh, so this project is to install a new metal culvert under West Main Street in the low area between Preston and College Drives. Uh, while doing the budgeting, it was believed that the sanitary sewer was replaced, but the water main was not. Unfortunately, the sanitary sewer was not replaced either upon investigation. The current metal culvert is separated and causing sinkholes to develop in the sidewalk above. The flow line of the metal pipe is rusted and deteriorated. The pipe was installed in the early nineteen eighties and the expected life of such a pipe is about thirty-five years. Uh, thus it is at the end of its expected life. The specifications for the replacement pipe are a galvanized metal pipe, but also polymer coated to the, to extend the life of the pipe. Additionally, the pipe is oversized so that in the future, the pipe can have another pipe slipped inside the current pipe and still have the same or better hydraulic capacity of the pipe in the ground today. Uh, so regards to budget and fiscal impacts, so the twenty-twenty-two capital improvement program budgeted four hundred and fifty thousand to complete this project. Of this amount, three hundred and fifty thousand is allocated to the city capital improvement plan budget from ARPA funding. And a hundred thousand dollars is allocated in the water and sewer capital budget. When you remove the engineering allocation of forty thousand dollars, it leaves approximately four hundred and ten thousand dollars for construction. The base bid is over budget primarily due to the unanticipated addition of sanitary sewer replacement. This alone accounts for twenty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars of the over budget. The Water and Sewer Commission will be considering awarding the bid on April thirteenth. Uh, there are certain ARPA projects that are not being funded or are being funded in an alternative way. Staff proposed that the additional funding for this project can be reallocated from ARPA funding. The cost allocation is as follows. So for the city funding engineering, we're looking at thirty thousand dollars, construction of three hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars for a total of three hundred and forty-four, four twelve. The budget was three fifty, so we are under budget by about fifty-five hundred dollars. The water and sewer funding, we're looking for about ten thousand dollars in engineering, a hundred and twenty-seven, three thirty-two in construction for a total of one thirty-seven, three thirty-two, uh, a budget of a hundred thousand dollars. So we are seeing an overage there of thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-two. And that's where we would anticipate using, uh, surplus ARPA funds or a reallocation of ARPA funds, which we will bring back obviously as the next action item, which will where that would be covered. Um, right now, where we think that would be covered is we had budgeted a certain portion to go towards, uh, stormwater projects or storm sewer projects. And the main project that we were working on, we feel is going to be within budget or actually under budget from where we thought. So there is some additional reserve there to be utilized towards this project. So that's why we are currently recommending that that would be the, uh, move there. So the staff recommendation would be awarding contract four twenty-two West Main Street Culvert as agreed upon to Dane County Contracting for four hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-four with the over budget amount to come from reallocation of ARPA funds. If you have any questions, Dan and I are here to do our best.
Have we ever worked with Dane County Contracting before?
I want to say yes.
The, the, the city itself has not worked with them, but, um, they have done work in Platteville. So the Newman Heights Project by St. Augustine, they did the site work for that. Um, I touched base with water and sewer staff. Um, they did not have a lot of contact with them, but they don't remember any issues. They did a couple of minor, uh, connections in the street. Uh, they did the Alliant Energy Substation off of Southwest Road a couple of years ago. Um, I don't really think there was any issues with that. And then they did, when all these parking lot a couple of years ago, they downsized, they did some of the excavating for that. Um, we did call around to other communities that they've done work with. And every, the, I guess the number one question we was asked, I mean, would you have them back? And I think all but one said they would have, and the reason why the one didn't is just because of, there were some supply chain issues and they had some issues with that. So other than that, the work was acceptable. Uh, they came in under budget, so they were all happy with them.
Other questions about this project? Why did I think this was going to be a, uh, cement?
You're, so we're replacing the, the, currently right now, there's no head wall or end wall. So the entrance and exit are just straight cutoff pipes. And so we're going to build a concrete head wall and a concrete end wall, which will help, um, with hydraulics, which will help pass the water easier, easier as well as for erosion in and out. So that will help considerably.
Why did you use, why are you using, uh, corrugated metal pipe? Why not something PVC or something like that?
They don't make anything that large PVC. Um, that's, that I'm aware of, that would be, you know, able to handle the traffic loads here. Um, so what we're doing instead, instead of just doing a straight galvanized pipe, we're doing polymer coating. So instead of it lasting thirty-five years, that gets us another fifty to sixty years. Um, currently the diameter is nine and a half feet. We're going to increase it to ten and a half feet, which allows us to line it. Um, the lining will do a couple of different things. One, it will take it back down to nine and a half feet, but then it'll take the corrugations out on the inside, which will make it more hydraulically efficient. And so the current culvert is sized large enough to handle the hundred-year storm by adding the head wall and end wall. That will help. And then in the future, when it gets re-lined, we don't have to worry about anything because we can basically put a six-inch liner on the entire interior of it, bring it back down to the size it is today, and then, um, it'll be smooth, so it'll have a lower, uh, coefficient of friction.
Corrugations on the outside of the pipe.
There's corrugation, there'll always be corrugations on the outside, but in time, we can fill in the corrugations on the inside of the pipe if we have to. Because it'll be, it's not like a, doesn't have, it does not have a smooth wall interior. It will not, correct. But when we do our hydraulic calculations, we take that into account.
Additional questions?
Question, um, timeframe, if this is awarded, I'm, I'm concerned about, I mean, I would assume it would, that project would start once university was.
Correct. So actually, it's going to be after that. Um, so Highway eighty-one between Platteville and Lancaster, they're supposed to start that, I think, at the end of the month here. Um, that is supposed to be completed by June first, even though County B is not the detour route. Everybody uses it as a detour route. So we are waiting until June sixth. Actually, I think it's supposed to be done before Memorial Day. Um, so that gives us a, a week of fluff in there. And if for some reason, um, it's still not done, we can work with the contractor and starting a little bit later. And then we will have it completed by Labor Day. So the intent is to do it after the eighty-one project is done and before the students come back.
Okay, any other questions? Hey, thanks, Dan. Uh, going on now to the Indian Park Historical Marker.
Yes, so during the March eighth, twenty-twenty-two Common Council Meeting, council members, city staff and individuals in attendance heard a presentation about the findings of a Wisconsin Humanities Grant conducted by members of the Friends of Indian Park. During the presentation, the conversation about applying for a Wisconsin State Historical Marker was broached. At the February fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two Historical Preservation Commission meeting, the Friends of Indian Park Committee members explained that they had submitted a request for pre-application for a historical marker and received justification from, I'm probably going to butcher this, but Fitzie Hamidol, the State Historical Markers Program Coordinator with the Wisconsin Historical Society, that their pre-application topics met the criteria for a state historical marker. It was expressed when developing the final application, the city will need to work with Dr. Amy L. Rosenberg and James Skid, Skidball, who are the state archaeologists in the State Historical Preservation Office. Uh, they will be able to work with the city on determining where and how we should place the proposed state historical marker on the site. Uh, so at the February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two Park Forestry and Recreation Committee meeting, the Friends of Indian Park Committee members also presented and provided further clarification to the committee members about their recommendation to have a Wisconsin State Historical Marker added to Indian Park. In researching the Wisconsin Historical Society's website, they have a dedicated section on how to apply for Wisconsin Historical Marker. The process is to submit an official application form, which is attached to the staff note for review. A two hundred and fifty-dollar application fee is required upon submission. If the application is approved, then there is a fee for the creation of the marker, which is done by S E W A H Studios. The fee for the creation of the marker expands in the increase of size from six hundred and sixty dollars for a sixteen-by-twenty-four marker to five thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars for a seventy-two-by-fifty-four marker. In reviewing the information provided by the Friends of Indian Park presentation, the following is possible wording that could be submitted for a historical marker in Indian Park. As you can see, I have that provided in the staff note where it starts with the old burial ground at Indian Park and provides you kind of with the synopsis. So the budget and fiscal impact is obviously, as indicated above, the budget and fiscal impact would be a two hundred and fifty-dollar application fee, which is required upon submission. And then if the application is approved, then there's the fee for the creation of the marker. Uh, potentially, there is the possibility to go after grant funding and private donations for the costs associated with the creation of the marker. In the event the marker would not be able to be supplemented by grants or donations, then the costs would have to be applied to either the city manager's contingency account or potentially anything from the Historical Preservation Committee's funds as well. Uh, so the recommendation here is both the Historic Preservation Committee and the Park Forestry and Recreation Committee have recommended the Common Council authorized city staff to work with the members of the Friends of Indian Park on the successful application for a historical marker to be located within the Indian Park. City staff would recommend common council members review the possible wording for a historical marker to be added and provide any recommendations or changes to the city manager before the April twelfth, twenty-twenty-two Common Council Meeting. City staff would also recommend moving forward with an application for a historical marker.
Okay, questions? Questions on this? Uh, Adam, it appears that the marker itself is five thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars, but the posts to put it in are another seven hundred and fifty. So that would actually be over six thousand dollars.
Yes.
And so I'm, I'm thinking that in an earlier conversation, I, i- is there a committee that has this kind of money in terms of historic?
No, but I hopefully the grant application would cover.
Yeah, so we would, there, we would certainly try to look at if there were any committees. I'm not aware of any, so that's where originally I went to the city manager contingency. But we would work with the friends group to see if potentially we could go after some grants. I know they're aware of some that they've already kind of had on their radar, so that would be our first move before we would have to, uh, pull the trigger on any additional city costs.
Yeah, because there's, I mean, that would just, there would also be the cement and other, yeah, so I'm thinking that this is a, a seven thousand dollar at least expenditure.
So none of the park, like, funds would be able to be used for this?
It's possible. Um, so that's certainly something we could look into as we get more kind of into the, um, you know, I think the intention would be to obviously apply for the application. And then as we get the grant, we can then, you know, if we get awarded the ability to put in a marker, we can then kind of brainstorm in regards to, okay, could we use, you know, there are some, that could be something that could go back to the park if potentially we could use, you know, trust funds or anything like that, um, offset from the grant. And then worst case scenario, we go into my contingency funds to use that, which, again, we don't want to do too much. So hopefully we could find some grants or offset it with this, as you indicated, Jason, some trust funds.
Or maybe people would donate.
That's an option too.
Okay, any other questions about the Indian Park Historical Marker? Otherwise, uh, I, will you put it on for action to submit the two hundred and fifty dollars or is that just going to?
Yeah, I mean, we'll have you guys officially because it does, that should be part of the approval. So it'll be back on the next council meeting as an action item for you to officially green light.
Great. Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll go to the campground update.
Yeah, um, it's pretty well explained in a summary sheet. Uh, I'll just quickly go through it, but, um, so we have our six additional sites that are now being almost ready. Uh, it'll, will be ready this spring. Uh, we intend to pour cement pads on all of them, uh, but we're going to start this spring with three of those. Uh, we're also going to put in our fire pits. All the electrical, uh, services for all the sites have been upgraded. We had some issues with the, uh, uh, amperage too low and constantly, uh, blowing fuses. So it took a lot of personnel hours to go constantly monitor that. So now we have upgraded each one of those to a fifty amp service, so we'll avoid that issue. Uh, some of the other work that we're actually doing, uh, we've actually planned on putting a shower combination, I mean, a combination locks on the showers, so that we can avoid some of the issues of people using that are not actually campers. Uh, so they'll be assigned, uh, a number when they check in. Um, the registration process now is much easier because we have now been able to put it on ActiveNet. Uh, Adam Bartels is becoming very familiar with ActiveNet, and so now they can register online. So they have a good idea, uh, when they're coming into town, not just hoping there's a campsite they can actually see and reserve in advance. For those that want to come and actually still do the process, come to the city and make their deposit, then, uh, uh, Jen will be able to put it on ActiveNet as well. So we'll constantly be able to tell, um, what is going on there. Um, our opening day, uh, is planning to be May sixth, that's pending weather. Um, we have only spent about seventeen hundred dollars. There was allocated of twenty-five thousand with fifteen thousand, uh, C I P. Uh, we will be, uh, definitely within budget on doing that, uh, even if we have spent all the money to, uh, cement that. We assume about eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars in cement. And, uh, the parks, uh, personnel will be able to do most of the work themselves. Um, so we would ask, there was one item that we would ask, we currently have it set up. The fee is fifteen dollars to reserve the site and then ten dollars if you wanted to use electric. But because of the upgrade, um, we just, we're going to ask, um, the council to just raise the fee to twenty-five dollars, not have the option. So that would be the action we'd ask on April twelfth.
But any questions? Ken?
My question is, um, how long may people stay out of sight?
Well, uh, what we're doing is there's not a discount. We're just going to charge the twenty-five dollars per night. And if they pay in advance, um, then they can stay, you know, uh, as long, for the summer period. We have decided not to, uh, is that, is that right, Adam?
I thought it was fourteen days.
Yeah, there's fourteen days at a time.
Okay, there's a two-week timeline that they have.
Standing corrected, fourteen days. But then you can renew it, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But you have to leave.
Correct. You technically have to, right.
So I couldn't stay all summer?
No.
No.
But you- But you could, Ken, I will make one exception.
Ken, are you looking for a new place to live?
In case I become homeless.
Okay. All right, any other questions of Bob on the campground? If there are none, then we'll see that modification in the fee schedule, I guess that'll be a modification to the fee schedule.
Yes, you have to, you have to approve that on the twelfth, and officially we'll see a modification.
Okay, all right, then that concludes the information and discussion portion of our agenda. And I guess then we're ready to move into our work session.